The November 14th Planning and Zoning Commission is now in session. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie O'Shamira?
Here.
Bruce Phelps? Stacy Dean? Here. Terry Parks? Dana Prus?
Here.
Richard Wilson?
Here.
Ray Hickel? Peter Mulcahy?
Mulcahy, here.
Mulcahy, excuse me.
All right, are there any minutes? There are no minutes? So we will go to C1 disclosures. Please, Ms. Dees?
No.
Mr. Prus?
I will disclose that I own a hangar at South Air Park at the Anchorage International Airport.
Mr. Wolf?
I would disclose that I was employed at the airport two and a half years ago.
Nothing, thank you.
I am employed by URS.
I do not.
And I have done.
Moving on to D1 for the consent agenda item, resolutions for approval, resolution 2011-043, related case 2011-113. A review and recommendation of the general government, 2012 proposed capital improvement budget, CIB, and 2012 through 2017 proposed capital improvement program, CIP. This is a non-public hearing. What is the wish of the commission?
We have to do a motion to approve the consent agenda and then pull it.
That's the only thing on the consent agenda. Okay. All right, my apologies to the commission and those in the public. We have to have a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Approved by Terry Parks and seconded by Dana Prus. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the commissioners wish to poll or have further discussions about? Any items to be polled? Everyone's...all right, seeing and hearing, none. The consent agenda items D1 through 5 are approved.
What?
Are there any objections? I didn't see any objections. There are no objections. Okay. Did you have an objection, Mr. Mulcahy? No. All right, seeing and hearing, no objections. It is approved. We're now moving on to item number E, unfinished business and actions of public hearings, case 2011-090. The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Mr. Parks?
Make a motion that we approve the West Anchorage plan as presented, case number
Seconded by Dana Prus. Mr. Parks, do you want to speak to your motion?
After hearing the public hearing on this particular plan and after extensive review last week, I believe it meets with the minimum requirements that we have to pass this on to the assembly.
Okay. Other comments? Anything from the second? Mr. Prus? Anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any other comment? Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing, none. Case 2011-099 is approved. Do we have some findings of fact?
Oh, that's it? Okay.
All right. They were...no one has any other comment? Anyone else have any comments about the West Anchorage district plan? Okay, all right, moving on. The regular agenda, there are no items on the regular agenda, so we're moving on to As it relates to these committee assignments, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about that. I would like to remove myself from the AMATS committee and remove myself from the Capital Improvements Committee. I feel that the administrative and responsibilities of the chair precludes me from serving on these two important committees. And I would like some volunteers for the AMATS committee and the Capital Improvements Mr. Prus, I'm looking at you. Do you not build roads? Do you not have an interest in where these roads go?
I thought I was on the Airport Master Plan Committee.
Yes.
So you want me on what now?
You are.
The AMATS. AMATS? Is that a possibility?
Okay.
Thank you.
Pressure from the chair and the big gavel.
Capital Improvement Committee. It seems to me that we've had a couple of commissioners to my right express some very serious comments regarding the Capital Improvement Committee, which is an extraordinarily important committee because it does involve budgeting items that come...dollars that come from the state legislature, et cetera, et cetera. I'm looking towards my right.
New guy here. Can you give me just an idea of what these committees...is it just his own commission?
Well, this one hasn't done anything because they never get the thing to us until the last minute.
Are we participating just within our own commission or are we participating in the other...
Well, hopefully, and since we have our director here, perhaps he could address how we can better...how the Planning and Zoning Commission can participate in the planning process and how commissioners can be involved in some of these committees.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, all those committees are very important, as you well know, and especially the AMATS committee. The representation is a significant responsibility. We...you know, I've heard over the years that you want things in advance. Obviously, I think you just had something recently from the Finance Department and the Chief Physical Officer that was given to you at the last moment. Sometimes those things are outside of our control, but everything within our department is within our control, and we'll get them to you well in advance. We'll give you whatever additional information you need to make informed decisions, and if we're not doing that, you need to let us know.
Well, let's just take...I know that there's the Technical Advisory Committee for AMATS, and those meetings are pretty well advertised. But on the Capital Improvement Committee, is there any opportunity for commissioners to interface with...there must be some sort of working group that makes these determinations or does it just appear out of the mayor's office?
Well, Madam Chairman, it really does appear from the Chief Physical Officer about a month or three weeks before you see it. The Planning Department is not part of that process, but I can let her know that you would like to be part of that process, and we'll see how that goes.
Okay. And I understand that these...this budget or report is made available to the Federation of Community Councils, and they do have public hearings on it, is that correct?
I'm not sure, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Mulcahy. We'll try and get you involved. All right. Are there any other committees that...well, I see the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan. What is the status of the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan, Ms. Wong?
The Government Hill Neighborhood Plan will have its first workshop in December, so they're just kicking off the consultant that's been hired as Winter and Company out of Colorado, and so they just started doing their background analysis and existing conditions. So you're all welcome to come to the open house kickoff meeting on December 3rd, I believe.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Fredericks.
I would really like to participate as the board representative in that effort.
Okay.
And in light of that, I'm already on two other ones. I'd like to trade off my...the School District Capital Request Committee for that one, if I could.
Okay. Is this Government Hill Neighborhood Plan going to be controversial? Is it going to deal with the cabada issue and...
The Neighborhood Plan will be looking at the proposed alignment whenever that is finally determined as it comes through their neighborhood, and will be looking at mitigating measures that will be forwarded to FHWA to consider as they design that project.
Okay, thank you. We have the Parks Planning Committee, which is also available. Is there anyone interested in the Parks Planning Committee? Mr. Mulcahy?
Madam, yes, I am. Is that the one that has a counterpart? Is there such a body, a Parks Planning Advisor or Parks Advisory Group that we would liaise with?
I believe that is correct.
There's something like that in there?
Yes. There's the Parks Commission, mhm. There's the Parks Foundation, there's all sorts of things.
Right, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any other change? Citizens Air Quality Committee?
No.
No, not getting any volunteers for the Citizens Air Quality Committee? Okay, Ms. Dean, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Let's move on to our discussion of Title 21, and I'd like to hear from each commissioner about how they feel about the proposed schedule for Title 21. Let's start...
Let's hear what the schedule actually is before we comment on it.
Okay, that's a good idea. Ms. Wong?
Can we have a point of clarification on a previous item before we move into Title 21?
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to Thede.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make clear what Commissioner Parks...his motion was to approve the West Anchorage plan as written, so that includes this evening's packet of recommendations.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that point of clarification. As for the timeframe for Title 21 rewrite review, we are planning another work session with you all for December 5th, and I think that's the same evening you'll have half an hour of the quarterly directors' meeting, so that'll take place from 5:00 to 5:30. And then at 5:30, we'll start work session number two, of which we've heard from the commission that you would like more dialogue, and so we will plan accordingly to follow those wishes. And then depending on if there are still some remaining issues left, we could schedule additional work sessions that week, maybe during noon hour, in preparation of the December 12th public hearing.
So that's the schedule, Commissioner Fredericks. All right, let's hear from all of the commission members individually in terms of how they feel about this schedule. Let's start with the new guy on the block.
Too aggressive. Can't get there. I think I meant...did I mention this last time? I think I did. I'm not as smart as the rest of you. I can't get there in a shorter time.
Okay. Commissioner Fredericks?
Well, it appears from the discussion tonight that there's kind of an unavoidable inclination to get back into the weeds again. And I don't...I certainly believe that from the Planning Department and the mayor's point of view, that isn't what they're asking us to do. They're asking us to look at a specific list of mayor recommended amendments to the provisionally adopted Title 21 and act on those. Now, I suppose we could go off in any direction we choose, and if we do, it's going to take...again, it's going to take forever. So we got to decide what it is that we are here to do in this particular circumstance. Are we going to follow the directions of the Planning Department and the mayor and what they want us to do, or are we going to want to take a...open up the can of worms? I personally don't want to open up the can of worms again. We've been there, done that.
Yeah, unfortunately, there are five members of the commission who don't have the years of experience.
I got that.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I guess, another hour of work session before this happens probably isn't going to get those people where they need to be. So, you know, I don't have a problem taking some more time on background to get people a little more comfortable with how we got to where we are, and it's okay because I don't think they are okay at this point. The questions I was hearing from Dana and others clearly indicate that they need some more background on the status quo. So that's fine.
Commissioner Wilson?
I think my questions indicate that, you know, I'm uncomfortable voting without sufficient understanding of what I'm voting for. Not having gone through the eight years, I guess, of this process, I feel...I'm very sorry that we are in this position where new folks are voting on something that's been developed over an eight-year period, and we, as responsible appointees in this commission, we want to do the right thing and know what we're voting for. So, you know, I'm sorry that any inconvenience this might cause, and I truly am, but I'm also...our primary job here is to consider carefully the long-term and short-term planning and zoning issues of this community, and this is a seminal decision, and it needs to be done with care and with due consideration. I think we need to have more than an hour and a half or two hours and a half on this, quite a bit more perhaps. Maybe this is something we can do over a period of days, a little bit a day, or maybe just all in one big chunk. I don't really care. I think we need to...for example, I asked some questions tonight about in the work session, how does it apply to a specific situation? I need to relate it to reality, and I really appreciate Tom's knowledge of the general principles of planning and how he presents those and all of these general topics, but I don't know the vocabulary yet, and I tend to go...I tend to need to have a...understand...have time to ask questions about how it applies so that I understand where we're going with this thing. So I'd vote for you getting together with the planning director and working out a schedule that includes quite a few hours.
Yeah, I too am in that same demeanor, that I think we need to take the time, and you have lots of new members. But I think it's also important that we get what we need to have to make the decision versus having information given to us that we can't apply or don't have the ability to apply. But I think a bigger picture than that for me is that it is a very, very big decision, and we do have a heavy load on our shoulders because this isn't something that's going to be for just a year. It's going to be a continual piece for a long, long time. I think we owe it to the city, I think we owe it to the Planning Department, that we take efficient time that we need, and it's my opinion that we should develop...the commission should develop the process that we want to hear the information. It certainly was very good tonight, but as Tom started, he...or Mr. Davy started, he said there was going to be time at the end of the meeting for questions, and we ran out of time, and what happens is you leave somewhat frustrated because you didn't get your questions answered, and I think it's important that we understand it, each and every one of us. And then number two, I think that I don't know that we're under a lot of pressure. Maybe I'm just not aware of it, to get this done in January or in December or whatever the timeframe is, but it's my feeling that if we rush through it, we're going to make mistakes, and each one of us need to know where we're going and what road we're going down.
Commissioner Prus?
Well, I think everybody pretty much said my thoughts on incentives, and it's...as you heard from my request today, I think there's a lot more information that could help, at least help me make some decisions, actually with infrastructure and then other things that, I guess, influenced the reasoning for the amendments. A little background would help, would help me with why the amendments are in front of us to be considered. And I think it's going to take a little...on all of the commissioners' part, a little good old studying and homework, and maybe the emails will fly a little bit, trying to get up to speed, but pretty much that's my opinion.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
I'm comfortable moving ahead. I feel like I've got a fair amount of knowledge of Title 21. I'm curious about the amendments. I'd like to learn more about the amendments, but I'm comfortable moving ahead on things.
Okay, thank you. My concern is that I want the new commission members to have as much time and to learn as much about the Title 21 rewrite until they are comfortable in making a decision. And I have heard from one, two, three, four of the commissioners that are here today that they are not totally comfortable without more information and quite a bit more information. So I'm going to say that five out of the seven members...one, two, three, four, five, five out of the seven members here tonight are not comfortable moving forward on the schedule that has been proposed by the Planning Department. I would like to ask a couple of questions of the commissioners because it is the holiday season as well, in terms of what their schedules are like in December and January, and are evening work sessions the best, starting at 5:00 or 5:30, or is there some time, most likely during the lunch hour or late afternoon, where we could meet at a convenient location?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Perry asked for availability on a number of dates.
Yes.
And I would assume we all responded to that?
I believe that some of the commissioners have responded, not all, sort of awaiting for this discussion.
And I would assume that those dates came out of availability of staff to meet with us, right?
Yes.
I think maybe you ought to focus on that list, huh?
Those dates came out of looking at room availability at Elmore as well as people's planned vacation time and around the holidays. So that's how those dates came about.
And are...
And looking at the December 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
So are you aware if there was enough response to make a rational assortment out of that?
Definitely before Thanksgiving was very tight. I think only two or three people said they could meet, but the numbers got up to four meeting during lunch hours post Thanksgiving, but not everyone has responded.
Okay. Well, maybe we could get a little bit better response and see what we can cook up between Thanksgiving and Christmas soon.
I think that's a good idea, but if we could take a minute, I would like to know is there...would the commission prefer to have more work sessions around the noon hour or prior to meetings?
I'd prefer the noon hour rather than evening or some other time.
Commissioner Wilson?
I gave...I responded to that email.
You responded, okay.
So I have specific responses.
Okay.
There are some days...noon is fine, but other days it's not fine.
Okay.
Five o'clock every day is fine.
Okay. Commissioner Mulcahy?
Similar to Commissioner Wilson, yeah. I've got a couple weekdays that are out of the question, but I will...I'm trying to do my homework. I am pulling the provisionals off the website, and we'll do everything I can to be there. One change from the email that I sent, though, I will now be out 13, 14, 15 December. I will not be in town.
Anytime that's better for you than others.
My schedule's very flexible. I can make it work.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Prus?
It's just, as I look at the schedule, I'll have to kind of go week by week. I do know that I won't be here for the first two weeks of January. That's about as far as I can go.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Parks?
And I'm good for most, anytime, with the exception of Mondays, first week and Mondays, and Tuesdays of every month.
Okay.
I'll make it work.
All right, okay, thank you. My availability is better the first 15 days of every month than it is the last 15 days. All right, what we...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask Mr. Weaver a question?
Certainly.
I pulled this off the planning website when it was posted, but there's a memo dated October 19th from you to the mayor outlining a list of amendments that...
Right.
...are being put forward. Is that still the list?
Yes, yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Fredericks, it is the list. It's the...those are the most significant changes that we're going to be proposing. You know, the mayor looked at this for a couple of months and decided, you know, what he felt needed to be adjusted, and those were the items that he felt needed adjusting. That was in addition to the 118 items that we already had scheduled to come back to the Planning Commission.
Right.
We're more than happy to enumerate on what those changes are, where they come from, what their origin and what the results are, but it sounds to me that we do have new commissioners, and it is very encompassing change, that you would probably be better off having a three- or four-hour work session in two sessions and get it over with because it takes a considerable amount of time to really comprehend what's already been adopted in these chapters that have been provisionally adopted, because all we have left to bring to you are the definitions, the 118 items that are minor changes for the most part, and then the mayor's changes, which are a little more than just minor adjustments. There were major policy changes. So we're comfortable with the schedule, but it sounds like that what...we really need to get consensus from the commission members of when you can meet, and my suggestion is you have it longer than an hour or two, that it be either... you have it longer than an hour or two, that it be either three or four and probably two sessions.
Yeah, I would concur. I think we're just going to have the issue of schedules, but it sounds like the number of us can be flexible, so I'd be happy to contribute to that.
Well, let's see what we can do as far as getting everyone together for a longer session. It's certainly something that's going to have to be coordinated and planned pretty much in advance, because we do want as many commission members to attend as possible. So we will get back to you, to all the commission members on that.
I do apologize for the lengthy presentation tonight, but it was Tom's intent to start that basis, to help the commission have a good foundation as the origin and the process of the code, and then we're going to have a couple of follow-up work sessions that maybe got into the details that some of you had specific questions on this evening.
So is that memo that I was referring to, is that still posted on the Planning?
It is still posted on the Planning's website.
Might be well for commission members to go search that out and bone up on it.
Do we, then, do each of us need to go search it out?
Or have staff send it out as an attachment?
I think staff can help us with--
Attachment to an email, right.
Staff could send it out as an attachment. That would be--
It's not that long.
--beneficial. Okay, all right. Any other comments from the commissioners? Any other comments?
Was one of the, were some of the dates, the first, the last three days of November, I've forgotten what the chart said. I'm going to be leaving the 14th of December, so, and I heard someone else say--
First two weeks in January.
And someone else said that the, so like the last half of December and at least a little ways into January is, means that maybe we ought to start in the last three days of November. Can we talk about--
Sure.
Dates now and sort of, is this the time?
I think this is as good a time as any.
28th, 29th, 30th of November?
Mr. Parks is out of town. Who else is available?
Oh.
Mr. Pruse is out of town.
Okay.
Doesn't work.
How about later?
Okay.
That week.
Middle of December. Fourth on.
Oh.
She will sit down. Here is your--
Oh, okay.
All right.
So the week of the 4th is the first time people will be available?
We have a meeting that, the 5th, don't we?
We have a work session planned on, at 5:00 on Title 21 on December 5th.
Yeah.
Well, it does look like we have a rather large agenda on December 5th.
Would you like to start earlier on the work session, maybe 4:00 that day?
That makes for a really long--
Long day.
--long. We're all getting a little bit older, Carol. We sort of fade after 9:30. What about later in the week? Later in the week?
Yeah, I'm good.
That week's good.
What time?
Well, if you want three or four hours--
Madam Chairman, could we do it on a Saturday, the 3rd?
No.
For me, the week of the 4th, I could take off any afternoon--
Yeah.
--as much time as you need.
Okay.
Same here.
You know--
Afternoon.
Yeah, for me, like--
After one.
Three o'clock on is good, because that's, you know, you can meet at 2:00. If you get done at 4:00, if you meet at 1:00, that's still shot, so I don't mind going into early evening. Yeah, well, let's go after the traffic, at least after the traffic. Yeah, 3:00 to 6:00 or something like that.
That's a good week for me, too.
And I know Mr. Weaver recommended four hours, but four hours of this is overload. Two and a half, three.
I like 3:00 to 6:00.
Three hours.
Three hours, so 3:00 to 6:00, any afternoon that week, I'm good.
Yeah.
Can't do it on the 8th.
You can't do it on the 8th, so--
No, no, I can't do it on the 7th.
You can't do it on the 7th. Thursday looks good.
I'm good with that.
Oh, Thursday's my bridge night.
Thursday, 3:00 to 6:00?
Yeah, if I can get out of here by 6:00, it's my bridge night.
Well, that'll be an incentive.
That'll be, you're the chairman.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
All right, 3:00 to 6:00. Does that work for staff?
Absolutely.
All right, all right, 3:00 to 6:00, December 8th.
On the 8th.
In Conference Room 170, so we can have more of a workshop environment.
Where, at the--
At the Planning Department.
Oh, okay.
Does that work for everyone? Planning Department?
How about a second day?
Okay. The 15th, who's leaving?
I will be gone.
Okay, that doesn't work? It's AMAS on the 12th. Yes, we do have a one hour.
Well, you've got the long-range transportation plan on the 12th, too, didn't you say? Somebody said that.
Well, we have a work session at 5:00 on December 5th for Title 21 rewrite, and then we'll have our 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on December 8th, and I don't know what's going to happen after that.
I don't have an evening left.
Okay.
Except the weekend, and I've got some every night.
Well, you see, then that puts us into January. And there is a tentative work session scheduled for the 9th before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is everyone here on the 5th?
Uh--
No.
January?
No.
No.
I'm not back until the 8th. No, I'm not back until the 15th, so I'm going to miss the 9th altogether. But I'm here on the 16th.
The 9th.
Hmm?
Yeah, but we have a meeting.
Um, yeah, that week doesn't work for me either. I'm actually out of town.
Oh, we don't have a meeting on the 16th? I thought we did.
There is no meeting on the 16th. It's a holiday.
On January?
Yeah.
What holiday is that?
I have no idea. President's Day.
Let's take the week off.
When you get President, you take it.
Yeah, when we're President.
Well, so then we get into--
They're gone until the 30th of January, February after that.
23rd of January, that week?
Gone.
We have people that are gone.
I'm here from the 16th of January until February 11th, so any time--
All right, when is everybody leaving for Christmas? When is everybody leaving for Christmas?
So did we decide we couldn't do anything the week of the 12th of December?
No, that's what I'm sort of looking at now.
Can we do it on the 13th?
I can't.
Terry, can you, you can't do Mondays and Tuesdays very well during the day. What about the 14th?
I'm leaving that day.
And I'm out on the 14th.
And you're out on the 14th.
I can do the 15th.
Uh, no, we have commissioners gone on the 15th.
Going back to the 12th?
12th.
How about, how about just biting the bullet? Start at 3:00 or 4:00.
Why don't we see how far we can get?
We're already coming at 5:00.
5:30.
Oh, 12th is our meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's it.
I think we just say about year after right now.
I guess maybe what we're going to do is, we're going to have a work session on December 5th at 5:00. We're going to have another work session, excuse me, on December 8th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we'll see where we get after that, because everybody's schedule is getting very difficult.
Well, let's figure on the--
Okay, we've added a major chunk in there, so we'll see how far we can--
Yeah, we'll see how far we can get. Okay.
Fair enough.
It's on the 8th. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we have a commitment from all of the commissioners that are currently here that unless you're in the hospital, you'll be able to make it. Great, thank you all very much. All right, are there any other comments from the commissioners? Yes. Mr. Wilson?
I just wanted to, I wish I had done this before they left, but the team that put together the West Anchorage District Plan worked very hard and diligently and came up with a very good result that--
Yes, they did.
--that recognized everybody's perspectives, the stakeholders, but it didn't do damage to anybody too much, you know, so, and it gave a good guideline for the future, for example, the land trade and stuff like that, and so the department should be congratulated on that, as well as the consultant.
I will pass those comments on to Thede. I'm sure he would greatly appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
From my three years on the commission, I can say that I thought that plan was the best plan that we've seen. So, thank you. And for those of you that are wondering, it was not done quickly and without thought, the approval. Thank you. Um--
No other comments? Uh, Mr. Fredericks, are you pushing? Oh, okay, let's hear it.
All right, seconded. All right, we're done. Thank you all very much.
I like this new chairman. She gets it right. It's not midnight?